Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 6th meeting of the Lower Providence Township Board of Supervisors. If you could please all rise and join me in reciting the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Mrs. Ekman.
Here.
Mr. Sherdini.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mrs. Emmett.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Before our meeting this evening, the board held a regular scheduled executive session, and we discussed legal and personnel matters. With that, we'll move on to item one on our agenda for this evening. That would be the consent agenda. And if someone would like to entertain a motion to accept our consent agenda...
Make the motion.
Thank you, Jill. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions on the motion from the board? Questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor can consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. Okay, item two would be new business. Item 2A, authorization to advertise our proposed 2015 budget. I'm Rich.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we've given two PowerPoint presentations to the board on the 2014 operating budget. We've given a PowerPoint presentation on the 2014 operating budget to the Finance Committee. We've given a PowerPoint presentation on the five-year budget to both the, both members of the Finance Committee and the board. Tonight, we've included in the proposed orange budget for advertisement the last items of negotiation between the board and the police negotiating team. So we think at this point, and we've noted all the items that have increased that are associated with that, so at this point, we think that we're ready to advertise the budget. And if you want to increase the debt service millage, also giving you that option to do. And I think that if you decide to do that, I ought to do that at tonight's meeting, although you could do that at a later time.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. I just wanted to clarify what Rich was saying. We have two contracts that we're under negotiations with. That's our Public Works and our police. They are not finalized yet. One is very...
One is finalized.
It is.
Public Works.
Yes.
Okay. We've come to an agreement, verbal agreement. But the police one, we do not have an agreement, and so we can only base those figures on where we are right now. And that's what Rich has said he's built into this current version of the budget. Okay, so how would we like to proceed? Rich is recommending we go ahead with that increase in millage that would cover the debt service?
Yes.
As well as the parking rec...
Yeah. If you recall, I'd shown you the unrestricted capital picks up $118,000 in terms of debt service, and I'd shown you the general fund picks up $152,724 associated with debt service on the golf course. Those two funds have been picking up those amounts every year. That's a burden on those two funds, as I advised you. That would, if you wanted to eliminate that debt service, that would require a .175 increase in the debt service tax, which would translate to the average residential home being assessed $29.22, or $2.43 a month.
If I may, I've spoken about it before over the last two years or so. I think the time has come to fully fund the debt service. I would like to propose that we move forward with advertising a budget that includes the .175 millage increase to fund the debt service.
I would agree with that. I don't think we have any option.
Well, I think you're right, Jill. We are faced with, with those increase, potential increases with the two new contracts, increase to our general fund of over approximately $200,000 in pension costs, salary costs, all of the other healthcare costs that goes along with a new contract. We could probably squeak by, but we're, but those are things that are looming for the next couple of years.
And I would say we, we've squeaked by for years at this point without an increase. We've, we've squeezed the proverbial blood from the stone at this point. Our staff is reduced. We've cut corners in every way we possibly can. I, you know, I'm confident that we are exceptionally fiscally responsible at this point, but I believe we're, we're not responsible if we continue to kick the can down the road with covering the debt service.
Anybody else have any comments on the board?
Well, I think it's clear that the increase in taxes is not due to the contracts. It's due to the fact that we haven't adequately provided a funding stream to service the debt that we're carrying. And I'll reiterate it, we had a plan for this. We had a plan that was going to take care of this debt service utilizing assets the township already owned. That would be the YMCA golf course plan. That plan did go down to defeat at the hands of this board by members who had supported it vehemently and decided that for whatever reasons, other things were more important. So here we are, faced with that debt service, and I do think you've left us in a position where if you're not going to maximize the assets the township has to service that debt, you're going to end up raising taxes.
Well, it figures that you would say that, Don. I realize you're living in the past. Yes, we were able to save our township open space. It was an investment made by board members a long time ago, but quite frankly, it's all tax money. It goes different millage into different funds. It's all tax money from our taxpayers, and we would have enough if, if quite honestly, we didn't have to, you know, do new contracts. But of course, that's what we have to face. We have services we need to provide to our residents, and they do cost money.
I'm not surprised you'd respond that way, Kelly. And I think it's a load of crap.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the audience? All right. At this time, would someone like to entertain a motion that we advertise this, this budget that's in front of us?
I'd make the motion to advertise the 2015 budget with the increase of .175 millage increase rather to fund the debt service.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions from board members? Questions from the audience on the motion? Oh, sorry.
Kelly, excuse me, I really don't have a question per se, but I would just state that I would like some feedback from the residents that are out there watching it on video or going to read about it in the paper or on the LP patch to please send me your feedback on, on the budget and the proposed tax increase. I'm, I'm looking forward to some responses.
Thank you, Patrick. And as, as always, we can take out things from the budget, but we can't add to the budget. So there is some leeway before we pass the final budget.
Yeah, you can always, yeah, once you've advertised the budget, you can always reduce the budget. You can take things out of it. Your only limitations are that you can't increase the budget by more than 10% in the aggregate or 25% in any major account.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Okay, then back to questions from the audience. Do we have any? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, this motion on the floor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Item 2C. Oh, excuse me, 2B. Authorization to advertise for our 2015 Township Boards and Commissions vacancies and 2015 professional consultants.
Okay. Well, Denise was nice enough to prepare the list of board and commission members who took, whose terms are expiring, and she's listed two for the library board, one for, actually there are, there's one that's expiring for the finance committee. There are two that need to be filled. Chris Engelberg can't serve, neither can Lucian Calhoun, and it's all got to do with the Frank Dodd Act. And then Mike from I N R had applied, but then he withdrew his application because of the Frank Dodd Act as well. So we have three positions there. Then on parking rec, we have two that are due to expire, two on the planning commission that are due to expire on the planning commission. Both individuals, Adam Suppley and Harold Baird, have already responded, said that yes, they are interested in a reappointment. We've got one position on the sewer authority, and we've got one position on the UCC board, and in that position, Richard Firth has replied, and he said, yes, he is interested in reappointment. And then we've got one position on the vacancy board, and in that position Gloria Corcoran has responded, and yes, she is interested in reapplying. And we've got one position on the zoning hearing board.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. We'll continue to try to contact those current board members to see if they're, you know, the ones we haven't heard from, to see if they're interested to be reappointed. I know sometimes it's difficult to get ahold of some folks, so appreciate the effort. Okay, with that, would someone like to put a motion out to advertise those open positions?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Jill. Motion and a second. Any questions from the board members? Questions from the audience? We're always interested in getting more residents involved in the day-to-day things that happen here at the township. It's very helpful. The more people we have involved, I think the better our township is. All right, hearing, hearing nothing else, call for the vote. All those in favor can consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Moving on. Item 2C, discussion and consideration of a request for a text amendment from WB Homes. I believe we have a representative here from WB Homes.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Chris Canavan. For those of you who have not had the pleasure of meeting, I'm the senior vice president for WB Homes. Within this evening is Bill Bonnberger, owner and president of WB Homes, and Justin Strayhorn, one of our project coordinators at WB Homes. In August, we submitted a, an application to the township to rezone in a text amendment form and in a map amendment form, two parcels of ground within Lower Providence Township together, I'll call them the Superior Tube Site. You can see on the aerial plan shown on the presentation board in the amorphous yellow blobs, you have the Westerly site, which is the larger one, I'll call it, which is approximately 35 acres, and that would be the ground between the existing plant and River Road along Germantown Pike. And then there's the Easterly piece, which is a 4.5 acre site that is across the street, across Cross Keys Road, from the existing plant. I'll handle both of these just in general first, and then we'll walk through our official presentation. The smaller piece of property, we have requested a map amendment to change the zoning from the PBO designation it currently has to R3, so that it would then mirror the adjacent single-family development that you can see on the aerial here. The larger tract of ground, we have requested a text amendment to the industrial zoning district that in certain conditions, where you have a certain track size of 32 acres or larger that's contiguous, and then it meets other conditions about environmental-sensitive ground, having issues with brownfields due to environmental degradation on the property, townhouses would be allowed on that site within an industrial zoning district. So it's a text amendment and a map amendment. Text amendment is for the townhouses, the map amendment is for the single-family home in short. Let me go to the next slide. Okay. This is just, this is your existing zoning map, which I'm sure you're all more familiar with than I am. However, I just wanted to show you that within the area we're talking about here, you have quite a wide array of zoning districts all coming together in one area. You've got R1 not far from the site. R2 is immediately adjacent to the Westerly tract, to the rear, if you will. You have industrial, which we are zoned. Next to the PBO, you have R3 or the Evansburg Village commercial. And then across the street, you have your RPB zoning district, and that is the area that the Township Planning Commission has been spending a lot of time reviewing with regards to the Ridge Pike Quarter Overlay District. So there's a lot going on with zoning within this particular area, and you have a lot of transitions between zoning districts occurring in this area. And that was one of the reasons why we looked at this site when it was made available by the owner, that it was for sale, of what could be done here. In our opinion, industrial with what has developed around the rest of the site, aside from the existing Superior Tube Plant, doesn't really make sense for additional industrial in this area. Not very compatible with the adjacent single-family homes to the rear of the site that have been developed, and really not supportive of the business and retail initiatives that are being looked at along the Ridge Pike Quarter. So that, our proposal for townhouses was meant to marry those proposals and then provide transition zoning to the rear single-family homes. With regards to the PBO site, from our standpoint, looking at that, that does not look like an area that would more than likely develop as an office or some sort of development area that way. It would make sense to basically complete the development of that stretch there with the same as the R3 single-family homes adjacent to it. We'll go to the next slide. If you don't mind, just skip over this one anyway. This was just the existing features plan, and we'll get to the next plan. Okay. You'll probably need to read, yeah, about 25% is probably going to be what we're going to need to get down to. So this is a sketch plan for the Westerly tract. This shows 140 townhouses. We would propose to do two different townhouse types on this property. Two-story townhouses, that would be approximately 2,000 to 2,100 square feet with one-car garages, and three-story townhouses, which would also be in about that same size of 1,900 to 2,100 square feet, and they would all have basically two-car garages with them. But that would allow for the 140 units a breakup of the different product types in there, rather than having one single product type for all of the units. I think it would provide some nice diversity, would allow us to differentiate price point with regards to that. This plan, while we tried to make it look as nice as possible, and this is what we would intend to build on this site, at this point in the process is a proof-of-concept plan. It is not, you know, we could spend hours talking about how the plan lays out, however, it's really meant to be a proof-of-concept of if you were to approve the text amendment we've requested, this is something that could be developed on there, and this is what we would intend on developing on that site. However, the purpose tonight is to look at the text amendment to see if it's something you would allow, which would allow this type of development. The plan itself, again, is a proof-of-concept. What we have attempted to do, though, is meet what is your R4 townhouse regulations with regards to the way this plan lays out, with some tweaking then, but with regards to bulk area dimensional standards, with regards to open space, things along that line, it very much mirrors what is already on your books with regards to this. This is just under four units to the acre is what the end up, the density ends up being on this piece of ground. If you can flip to the next one. This is a site plan of the Easterly tract, which shows just a very simple cul-de-sac with the 12 single-family homes adjacent to it. These lot sizes are consistent with the adjacent R3 development that is, that was developed probably, I'd say about 15 years ago, if my memory is correct, on that. So if you go to the next slide for me. We did want to also show you the two different, again, proof-of-concept generally, what we would propose to build on the site. This is the three-story townhouse product. I know one of the concerns we had heard during the time, you wouldn't want to have, you want to have something that's attractive, high-end, something that will bring value to the community. What we attempted to do by showing this is, the way we typically build our townhouses is something we believe is a high-end product. It's not a barrack style, not in a row home style. We provide offsets along the front facades. There's breaks in the side and front elevations with different building materials, whether masonry and siding, different types of siding, having bay windows, and then breaking up the roof lines with the A's or with the dormer windows. So this is generally the architecture we build. It's not something we had to specially design for you. It's something that we do as, as a company, but we think that it would fit in very well with what your township looks like and would bring a high-end value to the project. This, again, is the three stories. You can see the two-car garages. The side units have side entry front doors. We can go to the next. This is the two-story product. Again, similarly architecturally, we break up the front facade using different building materials, different breaks in the planes, so that it has, you know, a very, I think, better-looking architecture than your standard row home townhouse look. For those of you who are familiar with a project we did in East Norrington Township not long ago on Germantown Pike at Pot Shop Road called the Village of Carol Lee, this is very similar to that product that we developed there. That was very well received, received a very good high price point during the worst of the recession, quite frankly. So we think that that has a very, it's very attractive, and the layout of the townhouse units generally attracts a wide cross-section of buyers, whether it's first-time home buyers, you know, a couple, or we also had quite a few people who were empty nesters who were looking for something maintenance-free, but still wanted to live in the same community where they may have raised their kids in a larger single-family home, wanted to stay here, but wanted a better product offering for where they were in their, their point in life. Now, the final piece of this that I just wanted to present to you, if you can go to the next page. And that's going to be tough to read, so I actually brought, if I may approach. This spreadsheet. It may be slightly fitting having had your wonderful presentation also.
Credit spreadsheet.
This is something we've, we've put together typically for communities when we're asking for a change in zoning, just to take a look at what is the impact of changing it from a non-residential use to a residential use. There is sometimes a misconception that you're not generating as much revenue by doing something along that line, or you're going to burden your school system because of the change in zoning. What I've shown you here is basically a revenue of impact analysis based on the two site plans we provided, the 140 townhomes, the 12 single-family homes, where we're looking at average delivered prices for the units of $320,000 on average across the townhouses and $415,000 for the single-family homes. And then what does that equate to as you work your way down for assessed value to then equate, what does it do for your real estate millages and then your earned income tax? I'm not going to read every single number on this sheet. I think you're all quite adept at this. I think what it does show, though, is an opportunity to increase local real estate taxes by about $40,000 a year, and that's net of what you're currently collecting off of the vacant ground. That vacant ground is not generating much in revenue as it currently sits. And in addition, there is no earned income tax coming off of the vacant property, and we use a, and it's an indicator of what you can typically do if you're trying to get a mortgage. We project the average income of the home buyers to be about 30% of what the outsale price is, and that's a common factor used for mortgage calculations, things along that line. So that number usually gets us right in the ballpark, which would then show a generation of about $74,000 in additional earned income tax for the township, along with looking at the school district, you're looking at about a net of about $871,000 in additional revenue. Now, recognizing there may be some school-aged children that come out of the development, in working with the county, we looked at what is a normal factor for looking at how many school-aged children will be generated by a townhouse development. In much of our research, we found the statistic is somewhere right between .25 and .3 children per unit. So we use .28 for this analysis. That's been backed up by actually going back to communities we've developed, checking with the bus garages and saying, how many kids do you actually pick up at these bus stops on a regular, and that number sort of plays itself out. For the single-family homes, you're looking at having a larger number of students. You're almost, you're at like .83 children for the single-family homes. So that's reflective here. So net of what it would cost to educate those students, the school district is still looking at an additional $382,000 net of educating the new children at their current rate of cost per student of about $12,648, and then only 78% of that comes from local revenue. So that's showed on here. In addition to what I have shown on the top line, which is recurring revenue, that's what you're going to get each year out of the development, you also have non-recurring revenue that would come off of a development such as this. You have a parking recreation fee that would work out to about $176,000. The authorities would end up with additional sewer EDU revenue, and then there's the transfer tax from not only the sale of the ground to us from the existing owner, and then the outsale of each one of the units. One of the thing, and one of the things we did not show on here as, oh, I'm sorry, we did show on here on recurring revenue, I just want to point out, is we've also had the experience that on townhouse communities, you can pretty much average about 10% of that townhouse community is going to turn over on a given year. So from a recurring revenue, you also get additional transfer tax off of a community like that of about 10% of the units going forward. So that, that revenue is shown under the recurring revenue line. And then finally, I know an issue that has been discussed with us quite a bit as we've been looking at this project with the Planning Commission, is the issue of what's going on traffic-wise within the Ridge Pike, Germantown Pike Quarter area. A lot of discussion about a second bridge, a lot of discussion about how are we going to plan out all this. This development would have approximately $200,000 in traffic impact fees generated by it that can be used to help assist in those efforts and discuss that. And as we've talked about before, I know there may be other projects that are in the works. We're willing to work with the township on a more master traffic impact review rather than just site-specific because of the revenue that we can generate from the traffic impact fees on this. So I just thought this might be helpful to put it in perspective of some of those issues with regards to school-aged children, some of the issues with regards to industrial to residential, and how that might affect the township's financial situation. So back to the primary point we're here. We were in front of the Township Planning Commission on October 22nd, reviewed our request for a zoning change for both the text amendment and the map amendment, received unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission on both matters. We have received a review letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, who has recommended that the township work with the applicant to effectuate some change that reflects what we've done on this plan. So we're now here at the point in front of the board, the ultimate decision-makers, recognizing that this is purely a discretionary decision of the board, whether or not you want to change your zoning at the request of an applicant, to find out if this is a project that the board is interested in moving forward, and if it is, we would request that this board authorize their staff to advertise and work with us on the zoning ordinance amendments, both the text amendment and the map amendment that we've submitted in our application. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Bonnberger will be happy to answer any questions. And Bill, I should say before I do, is there anything I missed? No, I don't know about that.
The, I had a question for you.
Yes.
And it may involve going back to the site plan, but it was kind of interesting to me at the Planning Commission because we had discussed the ground or the soil contamination.
Very good.
And it was kind of interesting to me that it's relatively isolated, but maybe you could touch upon that.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Rich. It would be the first color rendering, which will be about the fourth sheet. Maybe fifth sheet. It will be that one when you, and I think that was when we took down about 25%. It will be that one when you, and I think that was when we took down about 25%. As Rich mentioned, this is a, as I think all of you are aware, there's contamination on this site. It's an Act II site. The contamination is twofold. One is groundwater contamination that is from the Superior Tube Plant actively being managed by the owners of Superior Tube Company, Inc., which is in the, the owner and operator of the plant. They have several monitoring wells on the site as they're measuring the extent of the plume with regards to groundwater. That we are very well aware of. There, there's public water available for the site. And in addition to that, we have, well, let me take a step back just so I can show you my prop, because I did bring my prop. We have submitted what is known as a combined remedial investigation report and cleanup plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for this property. Rather thick, lots of details to it. I don't think you want me to read through the whole thing this time, but I'll give you the short and sweet version of it. Groundwater contamination, the way that we propose to handle that on this site is deed restriction from any new wells being drilled, common requirement within this area anyway. Secondly, we will provide for the possibility if there's ever any vapor intrusion into the units, vapor barriers will be installed underneath all of the foundations of the buildings that we would install, along with positive depressurization, fancy word for something that's equivalent of a radon mitigation system, so that there'll be fans that will, through, you know, pipes going up through the roof, would move any vapor or any intrusion into the unit up and above the roof line so that there isn't a chance of contamination, if there were any, to people who live in the house. Very similar to a radon system for that. So, that will be required for all of the units that we build on the site. There is also soil contamination on the site. The soil contamination is limited to one very specific area. I'm not sure, does this have a, this, there we go. The soil contamination, if any of you are familiar with the site, there's a back parking lot behind the plant right here, and back beyond the parking lot, you end up with a wooded area in this area. Over the years, through fill and other things, the area, which is about an acre in size right back here between this tree line and what will be our property line, has soil contamination in it. It's away from where any of the residential units would be built. What we will do, per DEP's requirements, this will have a two-foot soil cap installed upon it, and also, per the request of the Planning Commission, we've committed to it, we will fence the whole area that is within that contamination area. So, it will be not available for people to have any contact with that particular area. We had looked at the possibility of what would it take to actually remove the contaminants in that area. Due to the depth of them and along with the fact that they are sitting right on the edge of a slope that then feeds into the stream, it's determined that it would probably be more hazardous and more harmful to attempt to excavate and remove them than it would be to let them sit there and through the long-term soil process, let it sort of mitigate itself biologically within the soil. So, these are all concepts that we have reviewed with DEP in a pre-application meeting. They've now had our plan for 85 days of the 90 they're allowed to have it before they issue a review letter. We're expecting to receive an approval letter of this plan any day now, so that they will have their approval of the plan, which would then be, once we would move to construction, we would install the two-foot cap and file the environmental covenants that we discussed, and then we would receive what is known as the Act II release liability on the property for both us and then any future owners of the property, because we have properly mitigated any of the environmental hazards on the site to the standards of DEP's Act II standard.
I have a question for you on that.
Yes.
Chris, you might not know until DEP comes back with their final decision, but, so, will you be able, on that two-foot cap, will you be able to have any vegetation planted on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And in addition, we can increase that cap if, for instance, one of the things that we will work on doing is we will obviously have two incompatible uses when you look at a factory and a residential use. So, there's a transition zone we're going to have to create there. We've shown a heavily buffered area here. We will also, it will be our intent to install a earth and berm along with that landscaping. So, that two-foot cap will probably get raised up in the back there additionally with additional soil to increase the height of the berm in that area, and then we would landscape the area.
Okay. And do you know if the soil contamination is just that one acre that's on your property or does it go across the proposed property line?
I don't know that. We've only investigated what we're buying.
Sure, sure. Which is, which is a, you know, a potential good thing that we could get this cleaned up.
Well, and I think from a standpoint, from the township standpoint, this would then be the permanent resolution for this issue by converting to that. All of the contamination will then be in the hands of, it won't be on one individual's property either, it'll be on a homeowners association common open space ground. So, there's, you know, I think that's a little bit more comfortable than having it sit on someone's individual property from a long-term environmental covenant enforcement basis. And it's in an area that won't be, there won't be any reason for anybody to try to go there. No one's going to want to try to put a garden there. No one's going to want to try to play there when we fence it off. So, I think it, it keeps it out of the way, but it does handle it permanently.
Okay.
Chris?
Go ahead.
I've got a few questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and again, I know many of you have heard my presentation before, so I may have skipped over a few things. This is not our first site that we've done Act II remediation on. This is probably our fifth or sixth site within the last seven or eight years. And we've become quite familiar with it, quite comfortable with it. We have a very good process we do then to disclose what we've done to the residences, the residents that are going to be buying from us, so they're well aware of what's on the site and there isn't a question coming back to the township. Well, no one told us that we had this restriction or that restriction. We provide the township with copies of those disclosure forms. And I think that our experience doing this tells us that this is a very doable Act II process and that we end up with a very high-end development that comes out of that. We just received Act II approval for a site in Sellersville Borough. We completed an Act II site in Ambler Borough called Station Square at Ambler. We completed two in Lansdale Borough recently. So, this is something we're very familiar with, and I, we've actually made a sort of business model out of trying to find these underutilized old industrial sites that should be converted to residential because they've only been zoned industrial due to past practice, not probably what you would do if you were planning the community from the beginning now.
Yeah. Chris, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
On that, on the contamination.
Yes.
You've got a lot of new homeowners that are going to move in here.
Mm-hmm.
New homeowners rarely read the documents that are put in front of them. So, on some of these sites, I've seen township disclosure forms.
Yep.
That will list where the location of the contaminated soil is. That's something that, would WB Homes see that, it's something that I would draft for the township. Every buyer is going to have to sign that before, or whenever they sign the agreement of sale, because what happens, as you know, you've been doing this long enough, is people don't read the books and the documents and the homeowners covenants, and then they'll find out that they're living on a contaminated site and they'll ask these folks, "Why didn't somebody tell me?"
Right.
So, I like to get that out.
We have absolutely no issue with that.
When you do the agreement of sale, I just drafted one in Lower Moreland.
Right.
For the Bud site.
Familiar with the site, Joe.
And, you know, that's proceeding, it's just...
And what we try to do, just so you know, John, too, and we can incorporate that with yours, we always, I mean, yes, this is an ominous book for any homeowner.
No one will read it.
But we, we always task our environmental consultant to do like a one or two-page summary of what's included in this book, and that's what they end up reading. So, that's something that we can help provide for them.
Okay, there's soil, there's water, are there monitoring wells on the site also?
There are monitoring wells at this time on the site. They are the property of Superior Tube Company, Inc. We have a site access agreement signed with them. The monitoring wells are, basically, we've designed around them. There's one that's in this little area of open space here, there's one down along the creek here, and there's one in this open field up here. They are going to be there for a while. The, from my understanding of their process, they only have through the summer of 2015 to get through their eight quarters of testing to get their Act II release, and if they receive that, those monitoring wells may not need to be there after that. But if they are, we would have appropriate documentation with the homeowners association on that.
Okay, on the, on the proposed, there's the text amendment, which is inserting the townhome use into the industrial district.
Correct.
And I have just some questions about that. But the other, the map changes, I'm looking, what's in the book, there's a, a, there's two pieces, right? One is, one is zone PB, and that's about 4.58 acres.
Correct.
That's going to R3.
And then there's a small one acre, like a small strip of ground along Cross Keys.
Village commercial that's going to R3 also.
Right. That's going to stay as open space either way you look at it.
Okay. So, on the, the text amendment.
Yes.
And looking at the, the ordinance that, that you filed with the request, you're basically incorporating all of the R4.
Correct.
Townhome district regulations. And have you, so you're, you're going to meet all the area setback bulk height parking requirements?
Yes.
There is also a design standard in here, which kicks you back to section 14328, which is an open space requirement.
Yep.
And that has a maximum of 20% of the gross site area to be dedicated as open space.
That's correct.
That plan is 20% open space?
Yes, it is.
Is there any stormwater management in that, in, where would the stormwater management be? Is that part of the open space? Is that in addition to the open space?
Well, if you can see the areas that, there's a two shades of green here, the darker green and the lighter green.
Right.
Darker green is what they use to calculate the open space percentage. The lighter green is not included within that.
There are the yards.
There are the, well, the yards and then this area inside the island here and, you know, the, some of it's going to be, it's just too narrow or stripped to try to create open space within there. But I do believe, if memory serves, and I'm just trying to pull to that page so I can read it, we are showing the site to have in excess of 30% of open space, John?
Okay.
And so, we have more than enough space to both meet the ordinance and if we need, and then to install some areas with open, within what is currently at 30% for stormwater management, will not take us below the 20%.
Okay, so, is the stormwater management...
You've got to remember also, we have, the area, we have this.
Right.
Whole repairing corridor area that sort of doesn't look like, but that provides a significant amount of acreage with regards to open space also.
Right. Well, there's a 20% floodplain limitation.
Right.
But is the stormwater management, is it, what is it? Is it underground basin?
No, we're going to end up, we'll probably end up with a combination of probably one larger basin down in the area I'm showing here. There'll probably be some underground basin work underneath some of these islands that we've done before. So, it'll be a combination of those. One of the things we have to work through with DEP, should we move forward with this rezoning, is when you have groundwater contamination, there is some question whether or not you actually want to do infiltration of groundwater as they require in their stormwater calculations. So, that's some of the items we have to work through during our NPDS permitting process. But I will tell you, I can stand here today, we're confident that we can comply with the R4 regulations with this plan. As I said, this is a proof-of-concept plan, 140 units on here. We know it's at our risk that we have to comply with that, and, you know, if it's not 140, it has to be 135 because we can't fit the open space and basin. That's at our risk, not the township's, obviously.
Okay. There is no, I'm looking at the townhome regulations and, in the R4 district, and there's accessory uses that are permitted, and they include things like playgrounds and parks and swimming pools. Is there any active, is there any facilities shown on this plan at all?
None right now. Again, this was a proof-of-concept plan. We haven't fully engineered that. The, that'll be something we would discuss with the township and the Planning Commission to see what level of active recreation they would want to see on here, whether it's a series of walking trails, whether there's a need for a pavilion and a set of benches, whether there's something more like playground equipment, and that's something we can work through when we recognize we have that obligation.
Okay, but it's optional right now.
Exactly.
That's my, if it's going to...
It's going to be something I think that we'll work through with the Planning Commission typically and then go to the board for their recommendation. But, you know, in developments like this, something like this center of green we have here, John, you know, we've usually created community gathering places in communities of this size, whether that is a series of benches with a nice array of landscaping or it might be a pavilion or some, and those are the types of things we'd look at for amenities.
Chris, what's the, the mix of the two-story versus three-story?
We're looking at about two-thirds, three-story, one-third, two-story, and that can slide. Basically, the way we have it laid out on here is the lower ridge, the two-story ones we're going to put down along the northerly side of the property so that it makes a nicer transition with the single-family homes that are on the other side of the woods and creek. And then the three-story would be developed a little bit further up the site, sort of in the meat of the property, and then that transitions over to the non-residential uses on both sides.
And they're all going to be on individual lots?
Well, we, we'd plan on doing a planned unit development, so the, it would be footprint lots. They would each own their own footprint of the building, and then the rest of the property would be common open space with exclusive use areas. That way, we don't run into the issues of rear yards and fences and things. We restrict all of those things to keep the community looking nice. So, the homeowners association will be responsible for all the exterior property maintenance.
Right.
And there would be limitations on what people can put in, the 15-foot exclusive use areas, you don't end up with sheds and play, you know, play equipment and other things.
Barbecue equipment and...
You can put that on your back patio, but you've got to keep it on your back patio, and that's it.
So, I know you, I know you mentioned the square footage of the, of the two units. What are they?
It ranges between 1,900 and 2,100 square feet. We have structural options, we have loft options, things along that line, so that's where that range comes in.
Okay.
And they're all three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath.
Whether it's a three-story or a two-story.
Exactly.
Okay. So, it won't be any smaller than 1,900 square feet?
No.
That's all the questions I have.
I was just going to ask, I think it would be helpful if you laid out, one, what the existing uses are under industrial, as is by right, how could, you know, what could be placed here versus you're proposing the R4?
Right.
And then on the PBO as well, you might want to go through that list, so our residents here and at home.
I'll give a general list of that, rather than with the actual specif, but, you know, on the industrial area, you're looking at everything from heavy industrial use that, like what is existing on the Superior Tube Company plant, to what I would call low-rise light industrial where you end up with, you know, probably condoed-out areas where you might have the car detailer and then the auto repair shop and then the transmission guy, all working within that area. You can allow landscaping contractor yards within that area. There's a whole wide array of those types of uses that is what would be permitted by right today on the site. But it still allows all the way up to the heaviest of heavy industry, similar to a full factory.
I can, I can read them.
Please do, John, that would save me from...
Manufacturing, packaging, treating of products, drugs, pharmaceuticals, food products, any kind of manufacturing, there's a whole laundry list, plastic metals, tobacco, textiles, wood yarns, ceramic products, printing, publishing, lithographing, binding, central heating plant, offices and office record storage, electric transforming substations, rail freight, public service, manufacturer of musical instruments, toys, novelties and metal stamping, storage buildings, warehouses, all types of manufacturing, there's a whole laundry list, lavatories, tattoo parlors, and body piercing establishments, a licensed therapeutic medical massage facility. They're your principal uses in the, by right, and then there's some special exception uses, landfills, incinerators, breweries, meatpacking, flour mills, any other use of the same general character. And there's one, that's a special, for special exception, and there's one use permitted by conditional use, which is an outdoor wood-fired boiler.
I think, Colleen, with that, along with the fact that many of those uses would not be compatible with many of the single-family uses adjacent to it, many of those would also have a opportunity to have a much greater traffic generation at peak hour than what this development would have. I know in discussions with Casey Moore, your township traffic engineer, he has stated that even at 140 townhouses, I know people think that's a large number, the number of peak hour trips that come out of that is somewhere going to be around 100 to 110, which is significantly lower than many of the manufacturing plants and other things that could go on the site. And PBO, John, I'm going to rely on you since you've got the text right in front of you, if you could possibly read those.
Professional and business office district. It's primarily professional officers, doctors, dentists, engineers, lawyers, architects, urban planners, accountants, consultants, business management, CPAs. That's it.
And one of our comments on that, not that that's any type of obnoxious use for that area, you have a lot of existing buildings along both Germantown Pike and Ridge Pike where you'd probably want to see many of them reused with those types of uses, rather than creating a whole new area that's off the main strip with that type of use. So this would be a way to generate households that then could support the businesses and other things within that area.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
If we go to advertise this, will then our staff have an opportunity to weigh in, like Mr. Woodrow? Or would we have them weigh in and then advertise next time?
Well, I think, I mean, my suggestion would be you need to make the policy decision here, which is townhomes permitted by right or by conditional use in the industrial district and the zoning map change. So, and then authorize an ordinance, the staff to prepare an ordinance. We would bring it back to the board.
So this ordinance was prepared by the one?
By us as the applicant, as the starting point.
Yeah, and there's some things that, you know, we've already talked that ought to be added to this. But, you know, until you make the decision, you know, to permit the use in the industrial district, then we would get together with WB and Tim would weigh in, Mike would weigh in, Rich and I, we put together an ordinance in a form that we would normally look at an ordinance in. And then it would come back to you. Then I think at that point, the authorization would be to advertise. So you have it in front of you and you have a final look at it.
Okay. So technically, John, do you need a vote on that?
I think a motion authorizes staff to prepare an ordinance that would permit the townhome use in the industrial district and the ordinance for the map changes.
Okay.
You know, which is, there's two attempts to getting ready to say.
Yeah, I just, we had talked at a staff level about perhaps adding architectural design standards to the ordinance. Is that something the board would be interested in seeing as we drafted something up if you were so inclined?
Definitely. That's actually exactly what I was talking about or thinking about.
I think our initial draft provided that generically, so not to get too bogged down in those. But we're happy to work through those because we did actually provide a previous draft that had some more detailed ones in it. So anywhere between those, we're happy to work with you on because I think our architecture can have no problem satisfying.
I know I'm getting ahead of myself also and you continue to talk about proof of concept, but just a thoughtful conversation moving forward about the placement of the entrances from Germantown Pike relevant or relative to the idea of a second bridge and traffic. So just putting that out there as well.
And just your, where we have them placed on this sketch plan was an outgrowth of a discussion we had with Casey with the thought that there's a possibility that Germantown Pike may midway between the two entrances make the curve over towards Ridge and then only, then we could lay, we wouldn't interfere with it. Because the last thing we want to do is end up with, you know, our entrance somewhere right here and then that screw up the whole transition zone.
Exactly.
So we're very sensitive to that.
Excellent.
Okay. Well, if we, if we don't have any more questions, would someone like to make a motion to authorize staff to produce this ordinance?
Make a motion.
Okay. You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We have any questions from the board members? We have any questions from the audience on the motion? Yes, Kathy, come forward, please.
My name's Irv Zimmerman.
Can you just come? Could you come to the podium because then that way the TV, they can hear you on the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Irv Zimmerman. I reside at 301 Evansburg Road. I enjoy living in Lower Providence of all what you have done. I would like to downsize and move out, but the taxes and everything are so high. But I grew up in this area and I've seen a lot go on with Superior Tube Company. I know that ground at one time was highly, highly contaminated. And my concern is that I have to get my water tested at least once a year by the DEP. And there's been a lot of changes in the residents along Level Road and Evansburg Road that this collection of contamination that was done by a certain plumbing company years ago with a broken pipe and all that contamination and trichlorethylene PCB or whatever it was entered into the groundwater. I've been a truck driver for many, many years, traveled across this country. And I have never, ever been in so much traffic that I have seen and been involved in, in this 422 corridor since it was being built and is now being built. The contractors they have that are doing these bridges and so forth and everything that the state is in drastic need of, I highly recommend that they are being done. But this Germantown Pike is a major route for me and my wife. And it is so congested. And we've been talking about for years about a second bridge going across in Collegeville. I have gray hair. By the time that bridge will ever be dead, I'll be six foot underground. I don't think it'll ever come about. It's the same way with Evansburg Road. Evansburg Road was going to go straight through. Whatever happened to that, I have no idea. But things get pushed aside. For this development, this gentleman, and I praise his company, and I don't behoove anybody of not advancing and generating money for their company and the township. But when he mentioned about $200,000, you're going to get extra for this and that, we're going to have to increase our police department, we're going to have to increase all the traffic, redo the roads. I like to see all that put in place first before they go through with any of this building. Considering the groundwater, what are they going to do when they put, I'm trying to grasp all what you were saying and it was very well presented about the underwater, the groundwater goes into pipes and everything. Where's it going to come out of? Is it going to be contained? I have no idea. Evansburg Road, in my consideration, is kind of uphill from where that is, but yet there's homes there that are contaminated with water. And I think things ought to be checked out a little bit more for especially the, the traffic situation and this. And I, I would not consider buying one of those homes if you sold it to me for $200,000 because I live a quarter a mile away across the field and I hear those fans and everything running from Superior Tube Company. They used to have a PA system, which they were required to turn it down. So I think a lot of people that would go in there and buy, they're not going to realize all what's going on. And I would not want to buy on a contaminated site. I don't care how clean it is. Look at Moyer's landfill. They build all those homes up there and there's people that bought those homes that knew absolutely nothing about it. They were poorly educated when they purchased them. And on Vincent Drive next to me, I talked to many of the people in there. I take care of a neighbor's house who is, he is severely ill with cancer. I've met a lot of people in there from riding around on my little, my little scooter that people didn't know of any contamination there. I can tell you for a fact, when recent Weaver owned that property, there was pools of blue and green oil on that property and that was never cleaned up. And that is a fact because I lived right next door and I put up with them. And if you ever go to buy my property, you'll see Arbe Vitae's along there, so I wouldn't see all that crap. And I hate to see anything undesirable happen to the people that work hard for their money. And there's a lot of people in this township, when you talked earlier and you asked for questions, now you don't like to say anything and I don't like to take a lot of your time because you have a long thing. You know, I retired in 95 and I have not got one increase from my big company that I worked for. I'm on a fixed income. The $2 and something, that's nothing. Thank goodness the gas is going down. I want to thank you for getting the proper contractor in to do that Arcola Road Bridge. Because some of these other fellows that are doing these contracting bridges around here, they have banker's hours, nine to five. You take a big company like the company that's doing that Arcola Road Bridge, that's a small project. He's done projects all over the country. A massive project up in New York City and it's running very, very smoothly. So just consider all that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. I think those are very excellent points and there's only so much that the township can do to make sure, you know, the proper DEP things are in place. I mean, I think we're better off now than we've ever been with cleaning up brownfield sites and this is something that we're going to need to be vigilant of. And luckily, we have a very good solicitor that, you know, can foresee some things to protect new residents and current residents. And we'll certainly do our best to make sure everything's in place to.
Like I said, I'm not downing the township. I love it. I'm over 70 years old and I've lived in this township since I was born and I like it here. And I applaud all the people that have been on the board, from the old timers years ago to the present staff. You're doing a fantastic job and I commend all of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any? Kathy, you have a comment. Come on up.
What he said was really good and he was very thorough on that. And I just think the point, and I know you're all aware of that, that the residents really do look to you to protect them in certain areas. And, you know, you brought up that they don't read the fine print. And building on a contaminated site really does need a lot of thought, I think. I don't think it's something you should rush into. They spoke about vapor barriers and I was going to ask a question. You know, if you need a vapor barrier for underneath the house, then that must mean these things can get airborne of some sort. What about the front yards? Is the contamination going to be, you know, able to come up through the front yards when the kids are playing in the front? And it just, it seems a little risky. I don't think many residents would be against the townhouse per se, it's just that location. I just hope you really would consider, I know it's in an early planning stage right now, but I think it, you know, it could come back and, you know, be harmful if people started getting really sick and that type of thing. And I wasn't quite sure, is this on the same side as Superior Tube? Same side of the street? Okay. So I guess, I guess maybe could I ask that question of them? That is, could the contaminants become airborne in the front yards? And that type of?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that, pleasure the board. The vapor barriers are what I call a belt and suspenders situation. The issue they're worried about is when you end up building out there, you end up having to excavate into the ground, put your footers in for the foundations, there'll be stone underneath of there. And if there were any potential chance for vapors, that would be where it is when that intrusion occurs with the foundation area, not just in the soil itself. And I would say, I, fully recognizing that you can call this a contaminated site, however, the groundwater contamination we're dealing with here is no different really than the groundwater contamination that has spread out and amongst other parts of the township out from this property. And I will use as an example, because then that's why I think it was good that Rich pointed out, the soil contamination issue is in one very small corner of the property where we'll be able to contain and cap that. We have been building in Lansdale Borough as an example for the last several years, several projects. That whole borough has the similar restrictions with groundwater contamination of no new wells, et cetera, because they're contaminated by the North Penn Area Six contaminant, which occurred from seven or eight different industries that basically the whole, underneath the borough has similar situation as what we have here. So it's not an uncommon scenario is what it comes down to. And as long as people aren't in direct contact with the groundwater, which is why you have the public water supplies, this does not become a hazard for the homeowners in that area.
Well, with, you know, ground saturation and, I mean, could there be a possibility of that groundwater coming up in their yards, you know, when we have a heavy rains?
The groundwater that's in question here is the deep aquifer, not the, what I would consider the perp water table or the surface water that's in the, you know, six to eight foot area below a, if you find, if you dig a hole, you're probably in that water.
Oh, yes, I thought they're putting in fences. And then a question, when you're talking about the stormwater, if you have a basin, a water collection, then that could be risky, right?
That's surface water. That is not part of where the contamination is. I'm sorry, I should apologize. That's, that's surface water. What we have to collect is the water that's generated from the impervious surfaces on the site, which would be off the rooftops, roadways, driveways, curb, sidewalk. And we have to manage that so it doesn't flood out, obviously downstream area.
Right.
That's all surface water that is entirely different than the issue we're talking about with the groundwater.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess the last question I have, sorry, it's my question, with parking, there wouldn't be any on-street parking with these? Is that correct? Because I imagine it'd be a little, that wouldn't be something that you would want to?
That's typically a function of street width, okay? And that's something we'll have to work through in the design stage. They will all have all-street parking and driveways and garages and then would be, on this plan, additional all-street parking shown as perpendicular spots there. So, but really the function of on-street parking is really a function of road width and that's something we would have to work through with the township.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Okay, hearing none.
Excuse me.
Yes, Don?
I just wanted to ask the presenter a question.
Yes, sir.
You seem to have a great deal of experience with this remediation of this type of site. I was wondering if you might enlighten us a little bit with what somebody else trying to, you've already done a plan to remediate, what somebody else might be facing in the way of hurdles from the state to develop this site where obviously you're going to make a profit selling the houses and everything. What kind of expenses are involved in the remediation part of the process?
Well, I, if, we've already spent, and we don't know if we're going to get the rezon or not, we've already spent over $125,000 in studies and plans and the report, et cetera, that we're doing here. In addition, we're going to, the additional cost that'll be incurred is probably somewhere in the range of $15,000 to $20,000 per unit on the vapor barrier and intrusion system. In addition, we will have the costs related to the two-foot cap and the fencing and other areas there that are yet to be determined, but that'll be something we build into our site cost. So there is additional costs associated with development on a site like this that we had to build in to our pro forma to make sure it still works for everybody. But again, that then provides some permanency to the remediation for the site.
Sure. What I was getting at is these same obstacles would be in place for somebody who didn't want to do such a large development.
You're absolutely correct.
And that would make them even more insurmountable to any development of the site.
I would agree 100% with that statement.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. I'll call for the vote on this motion. All those in favor, consent by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Okay. So this will come back to us again when the ordinance is all put together and we'll keep working on it.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 2D. This is a discussion and consideration of appointment of Jennifer Gambino to the Library Board of Trustees. Don, I have your name next to this item.
Thank you, Colleen. Yes, the Library Board of Trustees has an opening due to Jean McCarthy's resignation back in June of this year. So we did a little search over at the library and we found a light, a light in our community. She lives on 17 West Orchard Lane. She's very interested and very capable of helping the library out on the Board of Trustees. And so I would like the board's support on appointing Jennifer Gambino to the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on that? Questions from the audience? Okay, hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Okay. Item 2E, discussion and consideration of a request from the Lower Province Township Sewer Authority for waiver of a road opening permit fee. Mike, you have a memo on that?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This summer, a contractor who was working in conjunction with the sewer authority, doing some video, some video work of the township sewers, managed to get a piece of equipment stuck in, in sewers over, in the area around Amy and Jennifer, and had to, had to do some excavation to get them out and basically incurred some costs because they had to get a road opening permit. They did restore it, you know, had it inspected, everybody, everything was done properly. And Tom Sisipio, the sewer authority, asked for consent. and Tom Sisipio, the sewer authority, asked for consideration of waiving the permit fee.
Mike, I'm not quite sure I understand. Who paid the actual permit fee? Was the contractor looking to get back their own equipment they got stuck, or was it the sewer authority?
It was the contractor themselves.
It was...
Do you know if that's just a pass-through then, charge to the sewer authority?
That I don't know.
Well, I'll bet it is because Mr. Sisipio is the one that made the request.
So the sewer authority's making the request?
Yes. That's right here, Tom.
And the fee, Mike, is that you're, they're asking to waive?
I believe it was $150.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure from this request?
I sort of want some more information on who actually was paying the fee. I mean, if it's the contractor because he got his equipment stuck and needed to get it back, I'm not in favor of waiving that. If it's the, if it's somehow on the sewer authority, that's a different question, that's a different question for...
Well, I guess you could, we could table it, or you could make the motion that if it was a pass-through cost to the sewer authority, we could waive that, but if it, you could put it in that form of a motion, however you want to handle it. Right, Don?
Sure. I gotta believe that the sewer authority's picking up the fee. There was an email in addition to the memo that's in your pack from Tom, you know, specifically requesting that we waive this fee, and I can't believe that Tom would be going out of his way unless it was being passed on to the authority. But if it is...
It looks like they hired this company to do video services, and they got their equipment stuck, so they probably would be passing that fee along to the sewer authority because they were doing the work for them.
Sure.
If there's nothing timely or pressing about this, I'll be attending the sewer authority meeting next week to get additional information and bring it back to the board at our next meeting.
That would be helpful.
Okay. All right, so we'll table that, item 2E, at this time. Okay, 2F, discussion and consideration of a resolution reapproving the final revised land development plan for 3481 Germantown Pike, Terra Landscaping. John Rice, you're going to help us with that?
That is...
It's like Groundhog Day.
I was just going to say that.
That is mine.
I stole your line.
No, Don.
Without going through the whole history, this is a case that involved some litigation, and ultimately was settled for the first time in March of 2012. So when the hurricane backed to the township this year, started through the process, you ultimately approved a revised final plan consistent with a settlement agreement, which I had, which was fully executed by all the parties, which had a March 2012 date, and that was in September you approved that. Subsequent to that, I found a court order that had a later date that had adopted a September settlement agreement, which, except for some procedural provisions, then it was identical to the March agreement. There was a zoning officer's opinion that was published. Someone had made a decision to do that between March and September, and that's really the difference between the two. So because the second one was the final settlement agreement, was the one that the court actually approved in November, it made some sense to bring this back to you so the paper trail is clean. I spoke to Mr. Eskenian this week, explained to him what was going on, and he's fine with this. Nothing's really changing. We're moving forward with development agreements. We got a construction escrow yesterday or today. So this is, in my view, an administrative cleanup of something that was missed, that I missed in September. So it's a new resolution. It's a new resolution number. It repeals the prior resolution, 2014-17.
Okay. Thanks, John. Okay. With that explanation, do you have a new resolution number? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept this revised resolution?
I would make the motion.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have any questions from the board members? Questions from the audience? And the property owner is in agreement with all this, so that's quite a relief. Okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Okay. Item three, we have some announcements, some upcoming meetings, which may be of interest to residents. Sewer Authority has their monthly meeting, November 12th, at 7:30 PM, up in the Sewer Authority building. Lower Province Library Board is holding their meeting, November 17th, at 7:00 PM, over in the library. Park and Rec Board meeting will be held November 18th, at 7:00 PM. Some events that are occurring in the township in this upcoming, very busy season. The annual community tree lighting will be held on Friday, December 5th, and there's no rain or snow planned for that evening, so. That will be held at 6:30 and go to 9:00 PM out front here in Eagleville Park. Our yearly caring and sharing holiday food drive is already underway. I saw some of the bins out front. Items can be dropped off at the township building, weekdays from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And that's always a very successful drive that our staff here at the township building takes care of, and it helps our township residents out a lot in these holiday times. Okay, comments and other business, item four.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and they discussed the Rich Pike Business District zoning and the WB Homes project.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Rich, I believe you want to make an announcement on our multimodal grant.
I almost forgot. The township is pleased to inform everyone, we had applied for a grant, multimodal grant, for the straightening of the intersection of Eagleville Park and Crawford. If you've been following it, we received a $2.3 million contribution from Audubon Land Development, and we applied to PennDOT, and we received an additional $1 million associated with that. So we're up $3.3 million, which will give us enough to begin the design process, and there's a second round of grants at PennDOT that we can apply for in 2015. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Rich. That was some very good news that we received. I guess it was last week or so, and that was, of course, with the help of our elected officials, Senator John Rafferty and Representative Mike Ferb assisted us in and wrote letters of recommendation for that project. Okay, the Business Development Committee, Jill and I attended that meeting, and working on some initiatives. We have a good list of 10 sites that we're really actively pursuing. There are a lot of the same old, empty commercial sites that have been open, but we continue to pursue. A couple of things we're going to do is talk to the owner of Bud's Bar again and see if he will come in. He has a new broker. I guess this will be probably the third time, if he is willing to come in again, third time I've sat in on meetings with him. We're looking at Norristown Ford site, we're looking at the Eagleville Genardi site, what am I missing, Bill? Other big ones? 950 Rittenhouse?
Yeah, 950 Rittenhouse is the big one.
Another T C E, D C E site.
Right. So those are the four major ones that we talked about that would provide a fairly large impact.
And we're seeing a lot of nibbles and some activity.
Yeah, there's additional activity coming into the township, requests for information with different ideas, just initial exploration, so we're trying to give them as much of information as we can and direct them into a staff's listener meeting to get some answers to their questions.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, any other board members have comments?
Yeah, the library has their Big Fall fundraiser this Saturday night. If you didn't get your tickets yet, there's still tickets available, or just show up at the door. It's going to be a lot of fun, a lot of good food, beets, brews, books, and anyway, country line dancing, and some beer, and a lot of good fellowship, so I hope you all can come out and support the library, Saturday night.
Thank you, Don. Rich, will you be there with your cowboy boots?
I don't have any cowboy boots. I'm from Pittsburgh. I'm not from Texas. But I did live in Texas for a little while, so I know all about them.
Colleen, if I can, just an update on the fire hydrants. I know that back in August, we approved replacing two plugs on Buckwalter and Lantern Lane with actual working fire hydrants, as it came to our attention that they weren't working fire hydrants. Charlie DeFrancesco has an appointment this Friday to go out and mark them and then the locations, and then thereafter, we should be getting an installation date. I know I've gotten a couple of calls from residents there on Buckwalter, asking about the status and the update, so they are being worked on, and we hope to have them by the end of the month installed and working.
I hope so. I've been doing a full court press on this issue. Ever since you brought it to my attention, I thought that Charlie DeFrancesco had it completely resolved, and on the phone with Audubon and Charlie, and a couple of representatives from Audubon, and like you said, they've got a meeting scheduled, and I was surprised that we have to stake it out, that he has to stake it out on Friday. And once he does that, we should have a date for the installation. But there's no cost to the township, other than the annual rental fee that's associated with the hydrants.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rich. I was just reading this other memo from the Sewer Authority about that road opening permit, but it still doesn't really give any more info, so, sorry. Spacing out here. Okay, well, we'll move on to courtesy of the floor. If any residents have any comments, please come forward.
Just wanted to reiterate what the gentleman said about being thankful for the township that we live in, and I wanted to thank the township for your continued support for the residents down in Arcola against the middle interceptor. I know these are financially tight times, and I just think it's a shame that we have been forced into this position to defend our parks and our land when what you and everyone has been saying all along, that this pipe was never supposed to be here in the first place, there's already an existing pipe on the other side, that's where it was supposed to be, and we've kind of been, you know, just put into a situation that we should have never been in the first place. And just for people in the community, I know you're all aware of that already, and I'm preaching to the choir, but just for people that might not, there's a lot of people out there that still aren't fully aware, and they'll say, you mean there's a pipe on the upper Providence side already? And they don't even know that. You know, that the pipe was there, and it was supposed to be replaced in that trench, and that, you know, crossing the creek in that too little short area, just to avoid maybe some, you know, I don't know, make it easier on them. I don't know what the reason was, but I just want to thank the board again for always looking out for its residents and its community resources. So that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other residents here that would have comments, they'd like to come forward? Okay, hearing none. We had two more things. The Pico work that's been happening down on Egypt Road and Park Avenue was creating quite a traffic nightmare during the day, and so township staff has diligently and quickly worked with Pico to allow them to do the repair or the installation at nighttime. So I'd like to thank all our drivers for their patience, and trying to get this completed as quickly as possible with the less, least amount of inconvenience possible. And one other thing, we had a bank robbery in the township, and successfully, our detectives helped to quickly apprehend those perpetrators. What, less than a week, chief?
I had them identified. It's been an hour and took about a week. Just a great job by Detective Sorensen, Detective Neal, in tracking the very difficult locations. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, excellent. Okay, let's call for adjournment, then.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
[inaudible]